Beer Board, call to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cramer, Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilwoman Mayans.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated July 29th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any old business force? Under new business? We have a request for Class B off-premise beer permit for the Bargain Barn at the Incorporated, the Grocery Outlet Number 36, located at 5650 Hollis Street in Emeryville, California. This is their main headquarters. The Bargain Barn's located at 1115 North Charles Severs Boulevard. Does anyone here from the Bargain Barn?
I've already carried it, but I know I'm here for something.
For beer permit?
For United Grocery Outlet.
Yes. Can you come up to the podium, please? If you don't mind, just pull that microphone close to you. Thank you.
Okay.
So what's your name and address?
Michelle Brennan.
And what position do you have at UGO?
I'm the store manager.
Okay. So what's the Bargain Barn? Is that just a corporate name?
It's the company name.
Okay.
Through Athens.
All right. And you're requesting a beer permit to sell beer there?
Yes.
Have you not sold it in the past? Or is it just?
No. It's not even there yet.
Okay.
And we're getting a remodel. They're starting to remodel on the 13th of October, but I'm not quite sure when they're bringing in the beer.
Okay.
The company just got bought through California, so it's a big, huge change, and I really don't know anything about it really yet. They just told me to come.
Okay.
Get the license and...
All right. Do you have a process as far as, are y'all going to have a process?
Yeah. I've been certified. All the cashiers are being certified. I know you can't sell 21 or under ID. Like, don't sell to intoxicated people or any of the above.
Okay. So just to let you know, if, you know, occasionally the city does beer stings, make sure you're not selling from underage, that the first offense will be $1,500.
What is it?
The first offense will be $1,500.
Yes, I'm aware of that. I'm aware of the fines and all that.
Okay.
My name is on it and...
All right. I just, we always say that, just to make sure that, let you know we are serious.
I'm not saying I'm happy about it, but yeah, it is my position, so it is my responsibility, so...
Okay. Did you have something, Gina?
I just wanted to know she also finds the wine to sell wine stores.
Okay. Okay. That goes through the liquor, right?
State.
That's the state. Right, yeah. Yeah. Any questions from council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Am I also at the go?
Yes. Beer Board, meeting adjourned. We'll conduct public hearing. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cramer, Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilwoman Mayans.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Public hearings on ordinance number 692. This is the stormwater management regulations. Anyone here to speak on behalf of that?
I could be mad.
But he's not. This is, this is public. Yeah. Anyone? Public hearing adjourned. Regular meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cramer, Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilwoman Mayans.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This evening, the prayer will be given by Councilman McBride. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for your blessings. Thank you for health. I thank you for the opportunity to serve you and to serve the City of Clinton. I pray now that you would be with us as we conduct business. I pray that you would be with the employees as they conduct their duties each and every day. I pray for protection for them as they do that. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve, and we do pray for wisdom as we do conduct business tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thanks, Jim. Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated August 26, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we'll recognize any visitors or citizens to speak on any grievances or maybe a praise or two. Roger, smile like that. Anyone? Yes, sir. Please come to the podium and state your name and address.
My name's James Weaver. Live at 802 Reynolds Avenue in South Clinton. Just brought to my attention that they're going to put a four-way on Ridgeview stop sign at Unica and Ridgeview. Yes. And that's absolutely, I wanted to say on Reynolds and Lynn right there, and we have a high volume of traffic that comes through there, speeders all the time. And I'd like to have speed humps put in if possible. I know Ms. Manis, she sent me a form that I should fill out and I guess go through the 500 steps, but it'd be easier just to put them in without doing all that, to slow the traffic down, or do something just to slow them down. I'm about to the point where they start throwing bricks. They just fly down through there, and it's just, it's ridiculous. The neighbors can't walk their dogs, the kids can't get out and play or nothing like that.
How far away is, I'm trying to think where Reynolds is, how far away is that from Unica?
Well, it's the, it's just right before Melton Hill Drive, probably in between. But like I say, I feel like it'll push a whole lot more traffic right down that way because they fly up and down Ridgeview as it is.
Yeah.
They've got the little speed sign out there that shows your speed, and I can stop at the stop sign, they come flying over the hill. And it's, like I say, I don't know how high it goes, but it'll show them 45, 50 mile an hour, and you just keep trucking, no big deal, no brake lights, no nothing, they don't care. And it's not that wide of a road either way, so if we can just do something to try to get some...
Well, we've been trying to do a couple of things with that. You know, a couple of months ago, we had an engineer from the state that gave us some recommendations, and one was paint the lines on the outside because visually it tightens up that lane and people naturally slow down. Put some more markers out as far as the speed limit and I think some other signs. I think it's a big step that we're taking with at Unica, to do that four-way, and we'll see how well that does, which I think will be very positive. And we wouldn't be opposed to do some other things closer to where you're at. And Roger may want to speak on this. I think, you know, how the road is, if it's a deep hill, like you can never put a speed bump on Unica.
Yeah, no.
Because it has to be more of a flatter and not even turns.
It'd be easier not just to shut that road off right there, make them go down South Fowler.
Which one's that?
Unica.
Well, you know, the few people, the few people, we talked about that, just didn't, really didn't want to close it. I think we're, I think we're just going to do that four-way right there.
Right.
But I think, I think you bring up a good point. I'd like for you, you know, again, y'all can speak up, but my thought is, let's kind of see how this Unica intersection, because that's going to happen pretty soon.
Right.
Then look at some other options, because it might not be speed humps, but I know, I think some people, the department heads and Roger went to a class where there's other alternative.
Right.
Methods to slow people down. And I wouldn't be, personally, I wouldn't be opposed to having a three-way there at the Melton Hill, you know, that, that intersection.
Where Tim Williams lives.
Yeah.
Okay, well, back off the street from me, where Lynn Street cuts down, it goes to Blockhouse Valley.
Yeah.
That little road, that's where I'd like to have the speed humps.
Yeah.
There's a four-way intersection right there at Reynolds and Lynn, but it's no stop signs or nothing right there.
I tell you, um...
Fly right through there.
If you don't care, I know you've been talking with Wendy, let Roger look at some different things up there. And again, at the same time, let's see how Unica does.
Okay.
And we'll move forward on that. Roger?
You know, where's most of the speed in, Reynolds or Lynn?
Uh, Lynn.
Lynn, okay.
Yeah. Because where they bypass through to cut to Blockhouse Valley or from Blockhouse up to Ridgeview, that little side street right there. Instead of going all the way down Ridgeview to Highway Drive or whichever, they just cut right through. And like I say, they just fly right through there, just as fast as they want to go. And I get sick of it. I mean, we're right there, right on the corner, right on the side of the road right there, too. You know, so it's dangerous.
Yeah.
So anyways, but I appreciate it.
Well, again, please, we need to keep in touch with you. Let Roger and staff take a look at maybe some options over there also.
Okay. All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Communications for the mayor. I've got a couple of appointees for some boards, some people had to drop off. First off, from the Community Action Commission, Lineka Bounds had to step out just because she just didn't have the time to, to serve on the community action. And so I've asked Sonia Dai to fill in her, in her spot, term ending December 31st, 2024. Do you hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And Bill, her first name's S-O-N-I-A, just to let you know. That's a little different. I want to let you know, because you're the one who's checking it out. If it's a mistake, I can complain to you. The other one, Tree Advisory Board, Gwen Payne, had to be taken off, she had resigned from that position. And I've asked Joey Smith to serve in the remaining term, term ending November 30th, 2026. Do you hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. One other thing I would like to take care of tonight, probably should have done last month, but you know, every year, we have someone we nominate for grand marshal. And I think the most obvious person to ask this year would be Ms. McBride, coming off council after 17 years, did a great job, and be proud for him to do that.
Thank you.
So hear a motion for approval?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Figured you'd second that quick.
I know, do you want that?
I just wanted to check. I had a chance.
He would be a quick second.
Any further discussion?
No.
I don't, I don't, I didn't know if this was on or not. No, that's a discussion.
Fire Chief Archie Brummett has volunteered to be the driver.
Oh, Lord.
Might change his mind.
Yeah.
He probably wants to drive your own truck.
We'll do a background check on that part.
Yeah. Yeah. Maybe some other, maybe some other tests before.
If you'll get a haircut and shave.
Well, he's out, I can tell you that right now.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you all very much.
Wait. Committee reports. City School Board report, Ms. Johnson?
A couple of Clinton City updates. A couple of weeks ago, we held a grandparents' day slash family and friends' day, where we invited grandparents. And at Clinton Elementary School, we've, actually, our parent involvement has gotten so large that we broke it up, and instead of calling it grandparents' day, we just called it family and friends' day. And so K through 2 had their family and friends' day at this point, and then grades 3 through 6 will do theirs in November. But we had a great turnout. Lots and lots of people came out. We hit record numbers. If you have not heard, we changed our cafeteria vendor this year from Airmark to a company called SFE, and they also do the food service in Oak Ridge City Schools. And we have just seen a significant improvement in the quality and the choices for students' participation rate is on the rise. And we got lots and lots of positive comments from our parents and family, friends, grandparents that came to eat on that day. I'll give you two quick updates on our capital projects that we're working on. The auditorium is still coming along. We have picked out the paint color. The painters are going to come, and then we've lined up the ceiling and the lights to happen. At the same time, we'll be RFP-ing the chairs. We think that we're going to go with a black chair inside, just to keep it kind of neutral, and then we'll be able to bring out some, some color in some other areas. So that is moving and hopefully will be done at some point in the upcoming months. And then the Clinton Elementary all-accessible playground update, just huge thanks. Dwayne has worked really, really hard with Scott Ray and with Sean Hunt-Fries on helping get all of that prepared and ready. It is my understanding that the city opened the RFP for the asphalting on that, and that hopefully will be done sometime this fall. So that kind of has to trigger, that has to happen first, where we can park teachers before we order the new playground equipment. But we are super excited about being able to open up that playground, hopefully before the end of the school year, if not, then definitely by the fall of next year. So fall break is around the corner. It will be October the 7th through the 11th. And then we come back, and it will be time for our Blaze season to kick off. So Coach Little is super excited about the talent that he has on the basketball court this year. And so we're going to kick that off with Meet the Blaze on October the 17th. So we will once again have our boys and girls basketball cheer dance team, and then our winter guard will start making appearances once they start learning their routine. But we are trying to offset some of the fundraising that E.T. Stamey so graciously did for us when we first started this program. And so we do have a Blaze banner campaign going on right now, and the information is on our website, or I'll be happy to send it to anyone who is listening. But there are opportunities for you to hang a banner in the Airwood Arena, which is our Clinton Elementary School gym. And there are several different options for the size of the banners, and we're taking those orders until September the 30th, and it's on a first-come, first-served basis. So if anybody is interested in supporting our children in all the Blaze well-rounded activities, I can get you that information. And then just wanted to put on your radar with the Education Foundation, with Clinton City Schools and Anderson County Schools. This is a nonprofit organization that raises funds for both school systems and gives teacher grants throughout the year in the areas of STEM, health and wellness, and just instructional, instructional projects. They are actually going to be doing an online fundraiser throughout the month of October. So if you follow us on social media, you will see some shout-outs with that, and it's real easy. We're just asking community members to log, log on to that site and consider making a donation, because 100% of the profits go right back into our students in both school systems. So any questions for me?
Any questions for Kelly?
Thank you.
Any NIL opportunities, I guess?
Any what?
NIL opportunities?
Coming. It's, you're working on it, aren't you? Yes. There are no budget amendments tonight, so that's not here.
How's enrollment looking?
Enrollment, we're really holding steady. It is very, very interesting. North Clinton just continues to grow. And I, we, I guess it's the houses that are being renovated and remodeled, but we are seeing lots and lots of young families coming to the North Clinton. So we actually now have two kindergarten, two first and two second grades at North, with the anticipation that we will have to, you know, then have a second, third grade next year. So we are not too far off from North Clinton meeting the enrollment of South Clinton, which is kind of an interesting thing to watch.
That's interesting.
And Clinton Elementary, we're busting at the seams. You would have never known that we ever even added the addition on. We are still, but we're back to doing interventions in little hallways and nooks and crannies and all kinds of places, so...
Thank you.
Thanks.
Clinton Regional Planning Commission report, Vice Mayor Gann.
The Board of Zoning Appeals and Regional Planning Commission met on September the 9th. The Board of Zoning and Fields Advocate Frank Brody requesting special exception to allow for manufacturing on property located at 251 Highway Drive, property is currently zoned B2. There was some discussion about whether this need to be rezoned, but the idea was, the feeling was, at this time, probably the best thing to do was a special exception. It is a small manufacturing concern that he is planning to put in there, which is an addition to the existing one that is there. There were some stipulations posted on it, that there would be buffers, vegetated buffers that would help, also some parking additions, and there would be no carryover of this special exception. If and when he were to sell this, the special exception would go away. And it would go back to being just a straight B2. Any questions on that? The Regional Planning Commission also met on September the 9th. Advocate Tanner Drennan requesting final plat review for property located at 358 Clinch Avenue. This was a property division, so it, it was approved. Advocate Mark DeVal requesting final PUD site plat review for property located on Franklin Diggs Drive. There were a number of issues that Code's Enforcement and Mr. DeVal were able to work out there, and after these were resolved, this was also approved by the Planning Commission. Also, there was some discussion that is still ongoing with the department. We are looking at consideration on gravel parking lots. Right now, there's really no guidelines on it, and we're, we're looking at strongly putting in some guidelines about gravel parking lots. Any questions?
Any questions for Larry?
Am I correct, at one time, there was some discussion about doing some different zoning with entrances into the city? Is that, where's that discussion at? Like, you know, when you come in on the main areas, that they'd be different? Is that something that's...
I think Matt knows I don't recall.
So that's exactly where it's left, is that discussions?
Okay.
It's, frankly, we have, for a long time, talked about the, the main entryways into Clinton and talked about special zoning district for that, to, to, to make the entry more inviting, if you will, and let folks know that you're clearly in the city and when you're clearly not in the city. But that's, that's as far as it's gone, is just localized discussions. We haven't proposed anything yet, because I think that's much more of a public process. It'll require probably several public meetings about ideas, collecting ideas, collecting some, some planning examples as well, and looking at other cities, what they do in that regard. So I feel like we've just internally talked, and we haven't had any real action toward that yet.
Thanks, Matt. Any other discussion? Is that it? Do you have anything on?
Nothing agreed, Mike.
Okay. Clinton Utilities Board report, Councilman McBride.
Okay, in your packet, you have your normal Clinton utility summary, financial summary, and it's still difficult for me to underst, you know, to say this is good. But CUB had a great month in July because it was so hot. And when you're the consumer and you're on the other side of the table, you don't like paying the high electric bills, but you have to remember, that's what CUB is there for, is power distributor. So that's, you can look at that, if you have questions about that, I can try to answer it. But also in your packet, you will see something talking about broadband. And I think everybody is, well, just to cut to the chase, everybody's tired of calling Comcast and Xfinity, and would love to have some competition. And so General Manager Fay spent about 50 minutes with a good presentation, probably one of the best presentations I've heard on broadband, and CUB's stand on that. So I'm going to give you a 30,000-foot view, and it could even be 45,000 or 50,000-foot view, but if you want more detail, go to CUB's website, go to the meeting, and then go to kind of toward the end, and you'll see General Manager Fay's presentation, and it uses lots of slides and lots more than I'm going to give. But one of the things that you have to understand is utilities are just like anybody else. Part of the infrastructure and the backbone of this city hall, part of the structure and the backbone of Clinton Drugstore, any other entity, the school system, is you have to have fiber. That's how you communicate. You have to have broadband, you have to have access to that. That's how point A talks to point B and C and D and on down the line. So what you're seeing is you're seeing, for instance, and I'm going to use KUB a lot, not to pick on anybody, but that's just where you see advertising, see it on the side of Josh Heiple's headphones when he's on the sidelines and so forth. But KUB is getting in the fiber business secondary to the electric side. So the bottom line is, they are installing fiber throughout their electric network for the, their own electric benefit and their electric purposes, so that these switches and these power regulators and these different things can happen all electronically. And as a result of that, there's extra fiber. And I don't know what fiber looks like. You probably look it up, get a lot better picture than I can, but when I think of fiber, if you've ever taken a phone cord, which being a boy years ago, you'd cut things up and tear them up and look at them, but if you take a phone cord, there's usually four pairs of wire in there. So there's eight wires. Well, you may only need two or three of those wires, or four of those wires, but there's extra wires that you don't use. So in the event of fiber, you have something that's called dark fiber. And I clarified all this, I think I'm speaking correctly, so I think this is accurate, but dark fiber is fiber that's not being used. So in 2000, CUB began dialogue with Comcast, because at that time Comcast was putting fiber up, and they have over 400 miles of fiber in this area and in this network, in this CUB area. But CUB negotiated eight dark fibers. So this was eight pieces of fiber. I don't know if they're this big, minute, I have no idea, but they negotiated and got eight dark fibers for their own use. They needed four, but they got four more for redundancy. So they entered into an agreement with Comcast in 2002, and it is a 30-page contract document, legal eagle, all kinds of stuff in it. But they entered into an agreement with Comcast, and basically, the gist of the agreement was, is Comcast agreed to let, for free of charge, CUB have eight of those fibers for no charge. CUB, on the flip side, said, we won't enter into and compete with you on broadband. So you give us this, we'll give you this, and we'll basically partner. So 2002 is when CUB signed that contract. So you see, that's been a long, long time ago. And one of the benefits of that is that you've heard us talk about maybe Flizzer. You've heard us talk about where, and basically what Flizzer is, Flizzer is if you have an outage in a particular area of town, and immediately, there's 400 customers involved. From the command center at CUB, they can backfeed, and they can switch, and they can do all this phenomenal stuff through fiber, and they might be able to isolate that 400 outage down to 40. And then they call in a crew, and then they fix the pole or the transformer or whatever. So all of that is mitigated and done by use of this fiber. Also, automatic meter reading. So they don't send meter readers to your house anymore. I worked for a utility company when I was in college in Moorestown, and you know, you had meter readers. But in 2005, CUB got its automatic meter reading. All this is done on the backbone of fiber. But KUB just recently finished that, and Oak Ridge is just getting started with automatic meter reading. So the bottom line is on this is that the KUBs of the world are putting fiber in for their electric side of things, for their own benefit. And as a collateral damage of that, there's extra dark fiber. And so that's what they're using and running to people's houses, and that's the benefit of that. To talk about some of the things that's in this, one thing that CUB would have to understand and do, and may go back in on this contract. CUB can break the contract with Comcast. But CUB, if they do, better be ready to put this network, their own fibers up. And then you get into the place, and I talked to General Manager Fay, it's not as easy as hanging fiber from pole to pole to pole to pole throughout the city and the county and these rural areas. You may get to a point to where you have to install a new pole. Because between the phone line and the electric line, there has to be so much room. Between the electric line and the fiber, there has to be so much room. So you could get to a point to where if CUB did enter into this type of agreement, that they could have to replace 30% of the poles and put a taller pole so that you could gain that span that you needed between the different types of service. So it's not as lickety-split as twinkle your nose and while you're out here in the truck, run some fiber down through here, and then we'll hook to it later. But CUB can break the contract on their own, which they would, I don't see any reason why, I think it'd be a very unwise decision. But if something ever happened to Comcast and they went bankrupt, CUB would be able to get that fiber. They would then own that fiber for $1,000. So CUB is one of the only local power distributors that has a relationship with a cable provider that has broadband internet access. Some of this is talked about in this packet. But another thing that, like for instance, KUB, it talked about Comcast has four packages now. So you can have four different speeds, four different prices. CUB is only going to have two prices, two choices. So you're going to, if if CUB was to enter into this, which they're not, but if they were, you would also limit the number of packages or the service that a customer could even get. And one thing that I didn't think about and learned was that you, and a lot of people say we don't have high-speed internet at our house. They may not have it on a pole coming to their house. But if you go to broadband.com and you put in the 37716 zip code, Anderson County has almost 100% coverage of high-speed internet. Now, it may be through T-Mobile, it could be through some kind of satellite. Right now, in that 37716 zip code, there is at least 12 different high-speed broadband providers. Again, could be satellite, could be wireless, may not be like a Comcast or an Xfinity. One more thing, and I'll see if there's questions, hopefully I hadn't muddied this up too much. But the future is also something called nano mask. And those are boxes that are about the size of a shoebox. And the way it's been understood or being explained to us was, is that right now, if we get fiber at my home or your home, if you're with Xfinity or Comcast, there's actually a line that comes off the pole, comes into the house, into a modem, and then you have a wireless inside your house or you have whatever you have inside your house. These nano masks are wireless, and they're about the size of a shoebox. So the future is, in a place such as a Mariner Point or a Westwood or any other area, is that there would be these shoebox-looking things on the poles outside of houses. So Mariner Point, outside your house, for instance, there could be a nano mask box that is wire-fed to that box. But from that box to the 12 houses that are around it, it's all wireless. So even the technology is changing, that if you got into this business, it's going to constantly be changing. So the gist of it is, in a nutshell and in summary, is that CUB has an arrangement with Comcast. CUB is getting its network and backbone because of this arrangement. And so I don't see, and as a board member, would not recommend, even though if I go home tonight and my internet is out, I'm going to hate to call Xfinity, because it could be week after Tuesday before they get there. But it's not in the best interest of the local utility board to get into the broadband service. And it has to be for profit, too. So you're going to have to have customers that's going to be willing to pay, and then you're going to have to be able to have service that people are going to want to be a part of. So it would be wonderful if we did have another service provider that came in this area and that would give Comcast or somebody that run for their money, or Xfinity or whoever. But as it currently stands, it's just not a smart venture for CUB to get into fiber. Did I, does any of that make sense?
Yeah. Any questions?
Yeah, I remember the conversation, you know, it's pretty interesting. Moorestown Utilities, they've been, they've been trying to do this for, since 2007, they've only had 40% uptake.
My brother-in-law, that's where I worked in college, and my brother-in-law just retired there after 45 years, a few months ago. And it's a, it's something else, apparently. I mean, I think they thought, but and see, Moorestown, the thing is, Moorestown's within the city limits, so it's confined. But you've got CUB that spans out into several counties, rural county, you know, rural parts of the counties.
I just can't imagine financially keeping up with the evolution of.
Right.
The comments that I get, I have to do Google Fiber. Would this preclude Google Fiber from coming in?
I don't know anything about Google Fiber.
Well, I mean, they, they're not in the area, they, they're still.
But those folks have got to be willing to come. But I mean, I don't know, the, the issue there might be, is there room on the poles?
That's what I was wondering.
And would they be willing to, I mean, who knows? I mean, you might have to have, replace 30% of the poles at Google's expense. I do know now that certain poles are owned by certain entities. CUB owns the majority of the poles, I think, and maintains them. But there's a poll count done every year, or every few years, and then those entities are made whole.
Because everybody, right now, I think everybody thinks Google Fiber is the salvation after having been with Xfinity for so long.
And and the chairman of the CUB even said, you know, as bad as I hate to say this, you know, I don't think it's as smart. KUB is putting up 300 miles of fiber, and CUB currently, right now, has over 400 miles. So just imagine the expense of what it would take to just string fiber. And then what are you going to do? Because if you breach your contract with Xfinity tomorrow, then how are you going to operate all the different switches and power loads and other things?
Good.
So.
Thanks, Jim. Catherine?
I don't know if I can follow all of that, but I will do my best.
You have 30 seconds.
Just some updates on historic downtown Clinton. I gave you guys some information. We received a grant from Norfolk Southern to do the hardscape outside of Terrapin Hill. We had applied to do that as an entrance from Main Street. You'll see it in the photos, I did a picture of what it currently looks like and then what we're going to make it look like using some of the materials from the welcome sign that we did and trying to make that a compatible infill and look with the downtown area. So that creates a safety barrier. So now that we have the art sculpture and the storybook trail there, if there are kids out there playing, we wanted to create a safety barrier to Main Street. So that now brings our total that we've, of projects that we've done at Terrapin Hill down to $32,000. Again, something that started with our Clinton High School Youth Board and the $5,000 that they received. So we're still continuing to grow that area. I also gave you some information. So I worked with Roger, and we applied for the Tourism Enhancement Grant. It's a $100,000 grant, and it is to develop the new parking lot that was purchased by the city. So $40,000 of that grant would go towards paving costs of the parking lot, knowing that that's not the full cost, but we would allot $40,000 to that. And then the other 60 would be in the information that I gave you. So Sam George saved the columns from Zen Hicks' house when it burned, and he still has them and has offered them to us. So we would use those columns to create an entranceway to the parking lot. And then I gave you all the historic information that we would like to present to that area. There's a lot of information that you can read over there, but Zen Hicks loved elm trees and had a judicial forest when he lived on that. So we would like to recreate that with some of the landscape of the parking area. So that, while it's very exciting that we'll have some additional parking in the downtown area, we want to make that a really nice experience for people when they come and visit and park there. We had a very successful homecoming dance on Friday for Clinton High School students. We think we had about 200, 250 kids there that came and actually danced on Market Street. So and as far as we know, I think we kept everybody safe. And then just a reminder, we have our Fall Antique Festival coming up. It's going to be our largest festival yet. We've expanded on Saturdays down Main Street. The most artists that we previously have had is 38. We're now, as of this afternoon, at 49. So we will go all the way down to Hoskins on Main Street. And we are at capacity with the, with Market Street as well. So it's October 4th and 5th. Any other questions for me?
Is it October 4th and 5th or 3rd and 4th?
4th and 5th, Friday and Saturday.
That's next year's.
Oh, well, you're, you're, you're in hand, my goodness. Any action we need to take? You're just letting us know. Any questions for Catherine? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shale, is there anything you want to say tonight? I think this is a good, but I'll just, just come up, I don't want them to ask you anymore.
Do what?
I want, I'm not going to ask you, just come on up.
I can do that. Just as an update from ASAP, we do have two new grants that we just received, so we're really thrilled about that to help us expand our vaping class in our schools, and then also an alcohol grant to focus on underage drinking in Anderson County. So we're excited about those two grants. Our International Evidence Awareness Day went great. We had 13 resource tables and about 140 people in attendance. We were able to feed them, we did text Shroed House, provided those community resources. And then we released 75 butterflies for the 75 lives lost in 2022. It was a really special evening and excited that we were able to do that and spend some time with the folks in our community. Upcoming, we have a coalition meeting coming up on October 28th, I believe it is, it's that last Monday. And for that meeting, this year, we're restructuring our coalition meetings a bit. And we are going to be focusing on a different sector each month. And this upcoming sector is actually going to be our first responders in law enforcement. So we will invite all first responders and law enforcement out to join us for that meeting as we come together and discuss things that are pertinent to them in partnership with us. And then exciting new update is that we have a new partnership with JA. And so we're super excited to have a nonprofit job there this year for our students to be able to see. So that's everything I have.
Any questions for Shale? Thank you.
Awesome, thanks.
General Government Report, Mr. Houck.
Mayor, the tap grant project for the downtown area pedestrian and related improvements has been advertised for bid. A pre-bid conference was held on Tuesday, September the 17th, with a bid opening scheduled for Monday, September the 30th. Once we do the bid opening, hopefully we'll get the little contractor, little bidder, we have to send that to the, back to the state for their final approval. We're hoping to get this done in the month of October, we can get it on our agenda for the October 28th meeting. That should be the final approval that we can go forward. During the pre-construction meeting, just to let people know, we did talk with this being probably November before we actually get a contract on contract, that probably we're not starting major construction until January, at the first of the year. That way we get through the Christmas season.
Great.
The old National Guard Army, the bid advertisements and various contract documents have been completed and forwarded to the state for their review and approval. Once this is approved, we will go to bid, we'll advertise and go to bid for this project. As we talked just a few minutes ago, the Ridgeview Drive Traffic Study Recommendations. Our consulting traffic engineer has provided the final plan for the always stop on Ridgeview Drive and Unieka Street Cedar Circle Intersection. We are ordering the material and supplies for installation, which will be completed in the near future. We did get a request for the Yarnell Road Traffic Coming Study, which we have received. The design recommendations from our consulting traffic engineer for the installation of traffic coming devices on Yarnell Road. We are working with the neighborhood representatives to schedule a meeting for the neighborhood stakeholders to review and discuss the possible recommendations. The Anderson County Basic Operation Plan Update. Red Cross Amendments in June, in June 2024, City Council approved the updates to the Anderson County Basic Emergency Operation Plans. Since this approval, there has been some changes with the Red Cross organization that affects the plan. Therefore, the Anderson County Emergency Management Office has requested we approve the amendments related to the Red Cross changes. Based on this request, I would request for approval of the Red Cross Amendments to the ACBOP as presented.
Here a motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. We've received a request to abandon a portion of an alley that was originally platted with the Westbury Heights subdivision that currently separates two parcels owned by Kenneth White. In order for the owner to move forward with the future development of this property, it is necessary to abandon this portion of the alley and transfer ownership to Mr. White. Based on the existing conditions and seeing no need to retain this specific portion of the alley, we would recommend approving the abandonment and quitclaim request of a portion of the Westbury Heights Alley.
Here a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Finance, I'll defer to Chris.
Thank you, Roger. You should have in your packets, the finance report ending August 31st. We are 16.7% of the way through the fiscal year, so we're two months in. We've received 6.5% of our revenues, spent 70% of our approved budget. Part of that revenue that's, that's a little bit behind where we, where we were is, as we talked about last month, the sales tax that was being clawed back from the state on a particular business. This past month, we saw the first of three payments that, where they'll reduce that to get that $260,000 back that they feel they overpaid us over the last three years. If you have any questions specifically about any line item, I'm happy to answer those. Not a whole lot to report, being two months into the fiscal year. Not doing a whole lot of capital so far this year, I don't think there's a whole lot planned, as last year was a really heavy capital improvement year. But pretty much just operations as, as planned right now.
Any questions for Chris?
Is the state going to call this back in the next three months?
We've got two more.
I mean, are they going to be consecutive months?
Yes, yes.
Even though this was collected over two years?
Yes. They, they're.
They want their money quick.
So Roger and I had a, had a discussion over the phone with, with the state, and there weren't many options for us to, I guess, give that money back. One was lump sum, one was over a few months. And so what the heck, since they're not charging us interest to hold on to the money they overpaid us technically, we, we chose to ease, ease the pain by spreading it in three months. Wish there were some sort of appeal process, but apparently they do their due diligence on the front end when they look at this to see if sales tax truly was overpaid, and there is not one.
I don't have any problem with the collective, but it seemed it took two years to get it. They wouldn't give it back in two years, you know?
That would, that would be nice. That would, that should, that would, that would be fair, but the state's not always super fair.
So, I mean, I wasn't here last month, and I knew a little bit about this, but did you all find, I mean, you, I mean, not that it matters, just curious. Do you agree with, did they give you specifics or did they just take the money?
They just took the money. Our, our phone call to them, the most they would tell us was the entity that it was and that they had been, they had been collecting sales tax in error for things that were not taxable. And they've, and honestly, they've probably been doing it more than three years. But three years is, was the limit, that they were allowed to go back and audit themselves and state agree, you know?
Any other questions? Thanks, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Chris, the police department has four vehicles that have been taken out of service due to high mileage and repair costs. A 2003 Ford Crown Vic, a 2002, 2009 Ford Crown Vics, and a 2010 Chevy Impala. We recommend that these vehicles be declared surplus and placed on gov deals for disposal.
Here a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Vaughn, is this all, is this about all the Crown Vics left?
I have a couple more.
Couple more. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Asphalt paving bids for North Main Street and Marshall Street parking lots were received last week. We recommend acceptance of the low bid and contract award for both projects to Rogers Group Incorporated as follows. For $398 North Main Street, $103,510. For 204 Marshall, Marshall Street, $36,960. And as we, as Catherine said, $40,000 of the grant will help pay for the costs of the one on Main Street, Hick Street. And then Ms. Johnson will be reimbursing us the $36,960 for the school parking lot.
So our, our cost will be $63,000?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. We, we advertised and received sealed bids for the tree trimming and removal services at JC Park and Lakefront Park. Based on the results of the bids, we recommend acceptance of the bid and contract award for the project to Cortez Tree Specialists in the total amount of $65,050. The low bid was rejected on this one because he did not have the state contractor license, and we couldn't accept it. This project is funded through the Tennessee Department of Agriculture, which applied, the tree board actually applied for the grant. So it's 100% grant they got, I think the total was just a little over $83,000. There's, there's really no local match on it even. JB was on the tree board, but he had to leave and go to Lakefront. Riley was going to be here tonight to talk about it, but he had something coming up also.
Here a motion to approve?
So move.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
That's all I've got, Mayor.
I'm sorry, I didn't say this when we were, when I saw you in the back there. Can you bring us up to date on the traffic signal at Mariner Point?
It's, we've sent it to the traffic engineer, which they already did the study, they're in the design and price, pricing at phase. So, we, we should have something soon. Our problem is our, our traffic engineer, which works for Ken and Cannon, has went back to work, he'd been retired, but he's went back to work. Knox County Law's third traffic engineer, so he's actually working for Knox County also. So, it's kind of slowing him down a little bit on getting stuff out to us.
So, you think we'll have a, a price for next meeting?
Possibly. Well, no, because we'll have to go out to bid, we'll have, once he's.
Okay, bid.
We'll have to bid it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'll probably, it'll probably be a month or two, a couple months.
Okay. Any other questions for Roger?
Just a quick update on the pool, and JB was going to give that also, the, our contractor moved in over the weekend. He was, had been having problems getting the equipment. So, he actually went and bought several pieces of equipment in Florida. If you go through J.C. Park, you'll see it, there's several large concrete bins, trucks sitting up there so that they started pouring concrete Saturday. So, it should be moving pretty quick now.
Good, good. Anything else? Thanks, Roger. Under ordinances, ordinances and resolutions, first reading of new ordinances, ordinance number 693, this is the meaning of the CMC Title V, Chapter V, Purchasing Limits. Here a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Would you like to kind of hit the high points on this?
State law changed on the limits that we're allowed to, to have to go out for sealed bids. Before, it was 25,000 that we do sealed bids on. State raised that limit to 50, mainly because there's just not a whole lot you can bind under that, so it just raises that limit. The rest of our purchasing policy stays into effect. So, if it's anything from five to 50 now, we still have to get three quotes, so it ain't like we just don't have to do something. There's still, still a procedure, but it's three different levels to the procedure of it.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer, Councilman Bryan.
Yes.
Councilman Harrow.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilman Manis.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes, ordinance number 693 passes on first of two readings. Under second and final reading of ordinances, ordinance number 692, this is the Stormwater Management Regulations. Here a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
A third? Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Matt, would you like to, any comments on this? Got 20 seconds.
All right. So, just to let you know, the public meeting we held on September the 19th went well. Not very many visitors, but there was a lot of, not many scheduled visitors, let's put it that way. So, that went well. We had a meeting to talk about, a public meeting to talk about what the stormwater ordinance meant, and we held that at the Public Library during the lunchtime. So, this is essentially a new ordinance, as you are aware, for the folks at home. It, it covers everything from reducing the, it's reduction of, of water runoff that meets the state standards. It reduced the wordiness from 30 pages down to 20 pages. It removed conflicting language with TDEC. It added provisions for geotechnical analysis for steep developments. And the next steps is revision of, if adopted, the next step is revision of the grading permit in our process as well as the website modifications and with the new provisions. I'm open for questions.
Great. Any questions for Matt? Thanks, Matt. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer, Councilman Bryan.
Yes.
Councilman Harrow.
Yes.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilman Manis.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes, ordinance number 692 passes on second and final reading. Under resolutions, Resolution 840, Public Entity Partners Driver Safety Matching Grant Program. Here a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roger or whoever, can they?
Well, 840 and 841 are both grants that Public Entity Partners, which is our risk management liability insurance carrier, they offer facilities. Pretty much, if you apply for them, you get them. They're not very big, most of them are somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000.
We'll take it.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 840 passes. Resolution number 841, Public Entity Partners Property Conservation Matching Grant Program. Here a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution, Resolution number 841 passes. Any old business before us? Under new business, Larry reminded me that we need to congratulate Catherine Burbeck for the distinguished Wall of Fame designation, just congratulations. Golf clap. Any other new business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Means adjourn.
So, I was about to get.